Come on.
That's yours is.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:01 on this clock, so I'm not all that late. Let me call to order the meeting of the Meramec Planning Board for April 4th. Let me remind everyone who will address the board to make sure you sign in on the clipboard and speak clearly into the microphone. Make sure the microphone is turned on. By way of announcement, our next planning board meeting will be April 18th at 7:00 PM in this room, Matthew Thornton Room. That's it for the initial announcements. Planning and zoning administrators report. Tim, do you have anything for us?
Before you go there, you're going to appoint Vincent. I think he's the only missing member tonight.
Let's see, who did we do last time? Nelson, we'll let you vote to that this time.
Okay.
Want you for Vinny. Thank you, Tim, for reminding me of that. So, now, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In your packet you'll find memo dated March 27th regarding the regional impact determination for the NIP waiver of full site plan review. Staff recommendation is that this is not of regional impact, as it does not meet the criteria for the regional impact determination.
Thank you, Tim. What's the will of the board with respect to the regional impact determination?
Also moved.
Moved by Lynn.
Alister.
Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Alister. Any discussion? All in favor of the staff's recommendations? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 for that. Tim, anything else on the planning and zoning administrators?
I do not have anything else tonight.
Any members of the board have any questions for Tim or the staff? It's easy-peasy. Item three on our agenda is Skipper's Marine Corp., and this is, as the applicant and owner, and this is continued review for consideration of a waiver of full site plan review to amend a previously approved outdoor boat display and storage. The parcels located at 54 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Aqua Conservation Districts, tax map 2D lot 29, and the agenda item has been continued from the November 1st, December 6th, January 3rd, February 7th, and February 21st meetings. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before you hear from the applicant?
Just to give you a little bit of an update as to what's happened since the February 21st meeting, my staff and the fire department did meet Mr. Moore out on the site early in March to discuss some of the issues and to determine exactly where the gate sits. At that meeting, they determined the gate is 15 feet to the right-of-way and 25 feet to the edge of the existing sidewalk. Additionally, a couple days later, Mr. Moore came in and met with Jillian to work on annotating the plan, which has been revised and updated and is now the plan that is in your packet. Both Robert and Jillian have reviewed this multiple times, and at this stage, assuming that the board is comfortable with the changes and the modifications that have been made to the plans to address the concerns the board has had over the course of the several meetings, we think we're at a point now that a decision could probably be made.
Thank you, Tim. So, the fire department's happy with the layout and the staff's department happy with the plan?
That's correct.
Gotcha. Skip, come on up. Yep, but it's not on TV right now.
Skip, lawyer, Marvin Properties.
Go ahead and have a sit-down. I don't know if you want to go through some explanation of what's occurred since then, or are you happy with what Tim offered for a summary and maybe field some questions, or how do you want to approach it?
I just, I talked to the chief of the police station, I talked to the fire department fire marshal, and discussed all their concerns, and I think we've got everything under control and worked hand-in-hand with them and drew it out as they felt appropriate, and that's about all I can say.
Thank you, Skip. Any questions by members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, obviously, this is a much better arrangement. My only concern is this is a 724-365 plan, one you're going to stick with, or is it going to get, when you get busier, and always, you always hope you do, that somehow this will go out the window again? Is that my only concern?
Whatever, yeah, whatever gets approved as a plan that you've agreed to, you've got to stick with.
You've got to stick with it.
Be consistent with it.
Sure. I think what happened here is I'm kind of a company that's been in reverse since I arrived, and as I said earlier, I thought that there was a massive amount of empty parking in the area, and therefore, I could adjust my needs based on all the parking in that area that was empty, and it looked like the town was hurting in that southerly section of so many businesses closed, empty, and I felt that maybe I could help, you know, the economy in that area and bring some, you know, activity to the area, but I found out that my thinking wasn't as correct as I had hoped, and since then, I have been continually downsizing, which has actually worked well with my age and the 30 years I've now been in business where I would be more than happy to control it with the size yard I have. It kind of keeps me in check, and it's worked out quite well, but it's, I did start out rather large, thinking that was going to be okay, and now I'm where I just, now I'm where I need to be, and we'll just bring them in as we need to and not let them in until somebody goes, that's all.
Very good. Thank you for that. Lynn?
Skip, I went by today.
Yeah.
And during the, in the detention pond, there's no boats.
Okay.
Which I'm pleased to see. In front of the detention pond where you've got two parking spaces.
Yes.
Which is what you need to have.
Yeah.
There are boats there. What are you going to do with those boats?
Okay. There are two parking spots right now, as the plan indicates, and they are empty. Those spots are empty.
No, they're not.
From their south, the boats from their south are, you know, as the plan requests.
There's boats where you're talking about putting those parking spaces.
Okay. I was there today, and no, there is not.
I was there today, and yes, there are.
Okay. Well, you also thought that the part in the retention area was a boat. It was actually a fly bridge, not even close to being a boat, so that's all I can tell you.
So, if they're going to be parking spaces, they've got to be available for parking spaces.
And they were today.
Ultimately, if that's what's approved by the board as part of the plan, then the department's able to go out there and have a look at it and try and deal with it on enforcement level, and you don't want to deal with that.
Yeah, my understanding was that I would, once there's an approval, they'll come down and inspect and verify that everything is as be. I was told that I'd have a little bit of leeway as far as, once the approval happens, to set it up as requested, have them come down and go, "Okay, there are your lines, great."
You mean leeway in terms of time, because?
No, Jillian said, you know, they're going to, once I paint the lines in, in that parking area where those two spots are going to be, that, you know, they would just come down and do an inspection, you know, to see that that has been done and that the fence is up and, you know, things of that nature. That's all I'm saying. I thought there was a little bit of, you know, room, once I know what I'm doing, to do it.
Yeah, you're right. After you get an approved plan, you've got a little bit of while, a little bit of time to execute it, and then once it's executed, then we sign it and it's officially recordable.
I think her concern is she's seen boats all the way up that driveway, close to that retention area, but there is room between the retention area and where that other boat is. There's two spots there. I mean, it may look visually like there's not, but there's two parking spots right there.
I'll give you credit for it, but...
It was, I didn't go out there to see it, so I can't say, but you do have time...
You told me you would.
I did.
So, once you get it approved, you do have a little bit of time to execute it, and once it's executed, they'll come and take a look at it, then we can sign the plan for you to say that you've done what you've said you're going to do, and then it's up to you after that.
I actually liked the setup, and I think it's going to work well for us.
I hope so, too. I think that's great. Other comments or questions? Nelson?
Yeah, I have a few things. One, we have four parking spaces supposedly on this site.
Yes.
And I know, I can see two of them, and maybe a third one, which is the handicap, and where are the four spaces? Could you point them out, or someone to point them out?
Sure. So, the handicap space, the one right next door to it, and then the two on the northern edge, right next to those.
The shaded area, then, is intended to be a parking space also, is that?
No, that's handicap.
Yeah, that supports the handicap.
Just to the...
There are two in front.
I got it, okay.
And there are two diagonally, just to the right of that.
All right, okay.
You got them?
All right. And we, and how many employees do you have besides yourself?
One.
One besides yourself. So, you've got two for customers and two for you. Okay. All right, I just wanted to be clear on that. The other thing is, I did not see the fence shown on this plan, and I know we talked about a fence extending, I see...
Yes, it's there.
I don't see a fence on this plan. I see a...
Fence post.
I see a line. I don't see that it's a fence. Huh? I see a little arrow that points to a fence post where there's nothing, and then nothing else.
I drew, I drew an extended line from the gate, left and right, as a line, and then I put a post at the end of it.
Yeah.
I think we're okay.
There's a post on one end, and there's no indication that there's a fence there.
There's a line drawn there.
There's a line, yeah.
From the fence post.
If you hadn't been at this meeting, you wouldn't know it was a fence.
It just doesn't say fence, but, can you, it's there.
What kind of fence is it?
I think that's in writing, though. It's in the, where the writing is, where the fence is going to be, and...
Is it in the notes?
I think it's in the notes. Also, the notes.
It says the gate shall be kept closed. That's number seven.
When is the gate closed?
Non-operational hours.
Yeah, it's supposed to be non-operational.
Number seven.
When we leave for the day, we close the gate.
But you're not closing it now.
Pardon me?
You're not closing it, you haven't been closing it. You're non-operational hours.
Yeah, I'm waiting for the conclusion of your, you know, request, and... I mean, if I, I sometimes do go down, like this time of night, and I will be working there after hours myself, trying to get projects out, and you may see the gate open after hours if I'm there.
But it's not supposed to be.
Well, once we approve that plan, it's not, right now, there's, there's no requirement... There's no requirement for that under the current site plan. The current, in existence today, site plan does not require the gate to be closed in non-operational hours.
I understand. I'm just pointing it out, and I point out that the fence should be shown on this plan, should be called out, and what kind of a fence should be indicated. I don't see any of that here.
Are you going to do the, a stockade fence?
No, I'm just going to do a post, like the posts, you know, in the, you know, like these, the round posts, you know, pie and love, and then it's just really something to give some boundaries. It's really not...
There is a fence there now.
It's a split rail.
But it isn't delineated on the plan.
It is not there. Wasn't there on Sunday. When I last looked at the site, there's no fence there. The gate is there, but there's no fence extending to the property line.
Is that right?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't put the fence up yet because it's, I don't know if I'm supposed to.
If you show it on the plan, I think that's what I'm asking.
I've added a day in additional condition regarding that.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
One other thing. I think that we've been back and forth on the boats and how many are here, and so on and so forth. What do you consider your capacity for boats on this site?
Say about 80 boats.
80? You currently have 60-some high, according to the aerial photography.
Yeah.
I don't think 80 is anywhere near the right number.
It all depends on the size of the boat.
Yes, it does, but I think there should be a number put on it. Because of the typical boats we've seen and the number that are on there, I think we should limit this site to a certain number of boats, so that an inspector can tell whether this thing has gone overboard or not.
I think the inspector has the dimensions for the areas that the boats can't be, and if you put, you know, however you can push them together to make them fit in the areas where they are allowed to be, I don't see the inspector having a problem understanding what to do with that.
Well, I pointed out, I think it's, I think it's been a problem, and he thinks he can put 80 on here. He's got about 60, 65 now.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think he said about 80, but I think that the point is, he knows where the area on the ground that he's allowed to use for boat storage is, and use it up any way that you can or choose to.
For instance, my backyard right now isn't being utilized like it would be in the summer or spring or fall, when I have better access...
Lead forward a little bit. You're not quite near the microphone.
When I have better access to that area, like right now, I've got it set up a little bit convoluted, but it's so that when I open up my back door, I've got like a choo-choo train of boats that I bring in the back and then come in. I kind of lined them up at Christmas time, so if there was a lot of snow or something like that, I could open up the back door and bring them straight in versus having them all parked a special way where the snow comes in and it's now hard to get them out. You know, I, it's hard to explain the madness to how I operate sometimes, but, you know, for instance, there's more room in the backyard, is my point right now, but I didn't need that room because it was more important to have my winter projects lined up to bring in so I could keep working over the winter.
No, I understand, and I think that I'd want to, I would want you to have that flexibility. If we picked a number, whether it was 80, or 60, or 50, or 30, if you, if the number's 30 and you get a bunch of 35-foot boats, you're using up more space than we're allowed to give you on the ground. So, I don't want a number. I want the, you keep the bases, boats where they belong, and if there are a bunch of small boats, and they can fit a lot of them in there, great.
Well, there's no area designated that I can see, well, there's a couple, but most of the boat storage area is not indicated as such on this plan.
Well, some of it is.
Some of it is, and some of it is not. If we're going to go by...
Well, right now, there's boats stored in the snow storage area.
Yes, and there's boats in the unmarked, undeclared area, if you will.
I think it says previous employee parking, PR period employee parking. Does it say boat storage right there?
No, I'm looking at here.
Yep.
There's boats stored here.
PR is supposed to be proposed. This area is shown here as proposed customer parking, which I see, which...
This is, this is the one with the boat storage.
Is not customer parking.
But this is not.
Well, he's continued the dotted line all the way down to the fence.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, if you've got boats there, you can't put boat, you can't put snow there.
No, he doesn't, but he's talked about his snow storage before. He's got that figured out. And then the back area is labeled for boat storage. I think he's got the labels for the stuff that he's got to keep clear. He's got notes talking about what he's kept clear, too, I think.
I will say, you've got fewer boats there than you did a month ago.
Right.
Which I'm encouraged.
As projects get done, people are picking up, and it's based on weather, too. You know, mother nature plays a hand on whether they can get them or not.
I understand, but Skip, you've overused, in my opinion, you have overused your space with boat storage, and I think that's the problem that anybody has had with what you're doing. What you've got there now is reasonable, but when you start putting more in there and overloading it, that's where I have a problem.
Sure.
And I have a problem when people can't get in to park. A month ago, I went by, and there was a tool truck parked on the street because they couldn't get into your place. That tells me that you don't have enough space on your site to do your business. You're utilizing other people's space, and that's where, I don't agree with, no, I think you need to limit the boats, but I don't think we can limit the number of boats. Yeah, we could say you could have 30 boats under 12 feet, but no more than, I don't want to go there, but I want you to recognize that you are infringing on that space, and recognize that you need to not do that anymore, and be in compliance with what you're talking about doing, and I know this has not been true for many years. So, I think you need to recognize that and agree to do this, and I don't know that, I don't know.
You know, I told myself that I was going to mostly listen tonight.
Go with that plan.
Yes, go with that plan.
Nelson, did you have further questions?
Well, no, I didn't quite get an answer to the question I had. I pointed out that it's not, all of the boat storage area is not shown on this plan, and I think that's still true.
I'm with Bob. It's confusing, because I just had a discussion with Bob about, boat storage is listed on the left-hand side here with the dotted lines going all the way down to the fence, but yet, in that same area, it's listed as snow storage. So, is it boat storage or is it snow storage? And I don't think you can do both, at least in the winter.
In my plan, it's proposed employee parking is inside that dotted line.
No, no, no.
And then look below that, about three or four inches.
Three or four inches below it.
Below the label.
Snow storage area.
Yeah, yeah.
But here, here's...
You talked about this dotted line.
This is, this is, this is boat storage here.
How do you know that? Where is it?
It says right here, boat storage.
Okay.
Into there, it goes down.
Okay, that's, that's...
It goes down into there, and comes down into here, but at the same time, this says snow storage.
Yes, right.
So, there's...
That's the remnant.
Right.
One of the notes that's, one of the notes that's important to note is, in the new notes that Skip has added to the plan, Note 14, that the items that are indicated on the plan as proposed were constructed as part of the original site plan. Those are the things, because we're working off an old site plan, they say proposed, but they are existing. At least, they were existing at the time of the original site plan. What we're talking about now is the hand-marked modifications are what you guys are talking about and considering as part of this site plan.
So, Tim, is it appropriate to, for some of the area that's marked proposed employee parking, which has been constructed, and the area that's marked proposed snow storage, which has been constructed, if those areas are going to now be used for boat storage, should we block out those labels from those old stuff?
That's your choice. The angle and the approach that we took with Skip was to add the note to prevent having to white-out and mark up the plans to the point where it wouldn't be recognizable anymore.
No, you're right. One of these made some sense to me. Number 12 says the boats stored outdoors will be contained in designated parking spaces and outdoor storage areas, and I think that helps explain why there's boats in the parking spaces. You know, anyway, I think that the snow storage isn't a particular problem for him because he's managed to snow in a different way.
It's a little different than cars. I mean, you know, the boats are there permanently, and as I snow blow, I put the snow under the boats, beside the boats. They're way up off the ground on these trailers. They're not going anywhere like a car might be. They're, you know, kind of permanent there for the winter, and they got a little encased in snow because I pushed some snow up around those areas. I don't think it's a, it's an issue, really.
I don't have a problem with that.
No, it's not an issue with your practice. It's just this plan has an area that's drawn off for snow storage, and that's not what you're using it for, and that's okay. You don't have to necessarily keep the snow there if you've got another place to park. That's sort of the debate. I mean, if you were, if it was snow storage and you parked two cars in it, well, then you can't put snow in it. Same as, you put two boats in it, you can't put snow in it, but you're not trying to put snow in it. So, why don't we just, at least the proposed snow storage label on the left side, let's just block that one out or black that one out?
I don't have a problem with the, the snow storage being in the same area with the boats. That's, that's perfectly acceptable, but when I drive by and I find that people can't get into, or don't go into your lot, and there have been two instances, one, a couple weeks ago, when the tool truck didn't, whether it couldn't or didn't, I don't, I don't care. They were parked on the street. I don't consider that acceptable. If they're going to come into your facility, they need to have access to your facility, and they, I'm going out a limb here, they didn't feel like they could, because every place else that that Mack tool truck goes, they pull in right close to where your mechanics are. They didn't. They stayed on the street, which says to me, they didn't feel that they could get in or out of there easily. That's not acceptable, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, he's about the only one that does that. I don't know why he does that. I'll talk to him about it.
Well, if he's not the only one, then you've got a bigger problem than what I'm thinking about. So, that didn't help you.
Whoever you got that's a vendor, let them know that they need to pull in and not park on the street. There's no parking on DW Highway in that section.
The other one was, was shortly after the last hearing we had, I drove by and I found a customer, I'm going to assume it's a customer because it wasn't a truck, it was a person that was parked in the entry between the gates, right where the gates are. So, again, they didn't feel like they had to or could pull into your area, and that, to me, tells me that you've got boats or whatever stored in areas that are precluding people from feeling comfortable going into your facility.
If I may.
That has to be solved.
That is the purpose of why we're here tonight, because he's not following this plan today.
That's right.
This plan is not being followed. It won't be followed until an approval takes place, and then we have more teeth for the enforcement side of things.
But...
Yeah, no, you're right.
It may have been me, because oftentimes, I will pull in to my driveway and I'll park right in the middle.
It was not you.
Okay.
And this was on, between your crushed gravel boat display area.
Right.
And the highway.
Right, yeah.
So, it was somebody who was parked there, which actually would preclude somebody else from pulling in because they were parked there.
That, and I know that I did park there, just like that to inspect something.
It was not you.
Why, do you know what kind of car I have?
I saw the person that walked out and got in the car and drove off.
Okay.
So, it was not you.
All right.
Okay. So, once this plan gets approved, then that's going to rearrange your parking a little bit and kind of give you some opportunities to resolve that situation. Desiree, you look like you're working on a question?
Yeah. Not just a question, just, just a resolution for this. So, what we're going to, what we're going to do, so the plan will show you have four areas where boat storage can be stored, back behind the building, two strips, and then the circle in the middle.
Correct.
That's, those are the four storage areas.
Pretty much the way it is now.
Right. It's, it's just graphically, it's a little bit faint, so just trying to understand what it is we're approving, and then you're not distinguishing between employee parking and customer parking. It's just four parking spots provided, shown on the plans.
Correct.
Okay.
Which is okay.
So, I'd recommend that we just, just strike through the proposed employee parking and also the proposed snow storage area as, just, because he, then, it wouldn't, you know, then we're not contradicting anything, we're saying that, so we have that, and then if he could just label those other two spots with a number two, because he has a number two on the, by the handicap one, there's a number two there already, and that, I think, kind of wraps up everything, and it's, it's just documented, this is what you're going to do, and then you'll, oh, and already the rail, the fence part. So, I, myself, I'd be comfortable approving the plan that we're seeing with this, if we have just a little more, just notes added to them, just handwritten notes, and I think that would be enough.
Yeah, those things will get handled after approval, so we approve it and then they'll make a couple of quick marks.
In the bottom right-hand corner with a fence is, do I have a little arrow and say something about fence there?
Yeah. Our concern is, we don't know what type of fence. You told us, but it's not written here.
Oh, sure.
And it doesn't, like, fence, so you could say fence and fence post, but it's just a little more descriptive is what we're looking for.
If I could read what I've got so far to add, it's labeling the fence, indicating the type of fence. Strike through the proposed employee parking and proposed snow storage area, and add the numeral two for the two new angled parking spaces.
Sounds good.
I think that covered everything, Desiree, right?
One, one comment to that. Am I, never mind, I just found the note where it says gravel boat storage on the top. Never mind.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Just to clarify, there is no boat storage in the detention area.
Correct.
Okay. Nelson, did you have another one?
Yeah, one more question for staff. Tim, you said that you had measured 25 feet from the sidewalk back to the gate as an infield actual measurement, along with the 15 feet from the property line. These are shown. The way I read the 25 feet, it looks like it's 25 feet back.
The dimension is made, the dimension line is longer than it should be. It should be back to where the edge of the sidewalk is, so if you, it's, that 25-foot dimension is incorrect based on the length of that line. That is something we can fix.
That's something that should be fixed as well. Thank you.
Anything else, Nelson?
No, that's, that's all. I, yeah.
Anyone else? We've probably done public hearings any number of times, but if there's any member of the public who wishes to weigh in on this, off the board, anything to consider? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing.
The addition to the proposed conditions, or is everybody...
Go ahead.
Yeah, please go through it.
We would be labeling the fence, indicating what type of fence, strike through, proposed employee parking, and proposed snow storage, adding the numeral two near the two new angled parking spaces, and correcting the 25-foot dimension to the... parking spaces, and correcting the 25-foot dimension to the edge of the sidewalk.
All right, so if it's the will of the board, the next procedural step would be to take up a motion to have conditional final approval subject to those conditions.
A waiver of full.
Waiver of full site plan? We didn't do that already? Well, you didn't put it on the memo.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant waiver of full site plan review.
One second.
Motion and a second to waive full site plan review. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero. And now what's the will of the board? Lynn?
I will move that we, let me work the words here. We conditionally approve. Nope, I've got a. Provide me with words so that I can make an appropriate motion.
You'd be looking to conditionally approve the site plan per the recommended conditions of approval from the staff memo dated March 30th, with the additions as described by the community development director tonight.
And I will so move.
Is there a second for Lynn's motion?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Alistair. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Nelson?
First of all, there's no mention of this, of fixing this fence.
He mentioned that.
Yeah, he did.
He mentioned that.
Tim went over that list.
Right. He mentioned the other conditions.
That Tim listed.
In that motion, I said, "And the items added to the proposed conditions as made by me." So that would include the fence, labeling, the type of fence, the strike-throughs, the nu, number on the parking spaces, and fixing the dimension to the sidewalk.
Right.
Okay. Okay, just one other thing, there's an, also among your recommendations is that they eliminate the cross easements to the adjacent properties.
Everything that's on this list has got to be done.
Yes, I'm just clarifying for.
Yes.
If that's your intention.
That's part of it, yep.
That would not be my recommendation to the board. I'm not going to vote for this motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nelson's opposed. I will abstain, so that is five, one, one, to grant your conditional final approval. So, a few minor marks to make on the plan to get it to Tim, and then you are all set.
We'll be getting a decision letter and email shortly.
Decision letter. So thank you for visiting us on what's now six occasions. Nelson?
But I think we got that. And, and despite all those meetings, I still managed to win the fifth and sixth grade girls championship the other day.
Good for you, Skip. Hey, congratulations to them.
Okay.
Thanks for coming in. Let's see, what do I do with my agenda here? Item four on the agenda is NIP owner for LLC. As the applicant and owner, review for acceptance and consideration of a waiver of full site plan review for loading area improvements. The parcels located on 59 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 2E Lot 6. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
What you have in front of you here tonight, this is the large former Nashville Corp. building in the back part off of DW Highway in the southern part of town. This area is part of the larger building in the back. As you may be aware, NanoComp Technologies is in the front building closest to DW Highway. There's an area at the front of the building that they are proposing to modify to add nine additional loading docks for an undetermined future user of the site. As many of you know, this site is currently vacant, a good portion of it is vacant, and the owner of the property is making this application to try to increase the marketability of the project in order to attract potential tenants to, looking at leasing the space. So it's relatively minor. There is more information provided by Hayner Swanson here than you typically see in a waiver of full site plan review. However, given the size of the parcel and all the information that would be required for a full site plan, we felt the waiver of full site plan to allow them not to have to show the entire boundary and the entire parcel and all those types of things was an appropriate recommendation to make here to the board tonight.
Thank you, Tim. With that, please introduce yourself and then tell us what's on your mind.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Earl Blatchford.
Earl, I don't think your microphone's on.
Bright green.
Better?
Better.
Earl Blatchford from Hayner Swanson, representing the applicant. Tim's right, the, the plan we have, we sort of have the benefit that we've done all surveys out here, so we have pretty good boundary and plan of metrics information. The, as, as Tim said, the, the parcel, map 2E Lot 6, it's approximately 41-acre parcel, zone industrial. It's the large rear building and the land associated with that, which was part of the Nashville Corp. complex. The, the portion that we're dealing with is, right, this recess in the building right here. It's about a half acre of the site that involves the proposed loading area improvements. So if everyone's familiar with the location of the site, I'll kind of zoom in on that area. It's, I mean, the existing building is about 467,000 square feet, there's about 400 parking spaces out there. Currently, very few are utilized, and some of the parking areas aren't currently striped because they aren't currently used. There's a, a large, there's this isolated parking area out there that holds about 160 parking spaces, but it hasn't been striped in years, just because it's not currently needed. But it, it figures into the overall calculation. Let me just flip to the, yeah. And this, this is a 20 scale, and it's, it's rotated 90 degrees from the plan, the master site plan. So this is that building recessed right here. This is the existing parking field out the front. And then the area where the improvements are going, there's a 200, approximately 200-foot wide by 100-foot deep brass panel adjacent to that recessed area, and that's where the improvements are going. This west-facing wall is where the, it's currently a blank wall, and that's where the new, the nine new loading docks are going. Flip to the proposed. And this is sheet two of your plan set. The next sheet shows the improvements. So basically, on, on this end, there's going to be a retaining wall, just for the grade difference, because these are, are four-foot recessed docks. So we have to cut down on the existing grade. So the, the docks run from here to here, and then there's a couple of man doors with steps down to the pavement area. The front, the 50 feet nearest, the face of the building will be reinforced concrete where the trailer loading gear will be put down for different-sized vehicles. And then the outer 100, outer 50 feet of that 100-foot depth is heavy-duty bituminous, standard bituminous concrete pavement. So, of course, we're, so this is the increase, it's about 19,000 square feet of new impervious, and to mitigate that, we put in a couple of catch basins, which go into a, underground infiltration system. And we conveniently, there's a 15-inch roof drain that kind of conveniently runs through our work area, and we're putting the system in below. We're using that as a, a emergency overflow connection, but we're basically, our calculations show, we're infiltrating up to the 50-year design storm. So we're basically, any of the rain that hits this area will be infiltrated. Because it's recessed, everything cheats away from the edge of the, the existing edge of pavement, so that the storm drain system that's out there that serves the parking lot, that's unaffected by what we're doing. We're, we're completely independent of that. We just have a, a high emergency connection in case you get a storm greater than the 50-year storm. So we, because we're in the, the Aquifer Conservation District, we went to the Conservation Commission on March 20th. It was a very quick meeting, there were no issues. We've kind of included in our notes and in our design of our, our drainage system, kind of included the things that they typically look for, as far as the deep sumps, the gas hoods in the catch basins, and then the de-icing practices for the winter maintenance and the, yeah, the fertilizer, judicious use of fertilizers, and low nitrogen fertilizer and everything, kind of the standard things that they look for. So, and I think they have communicated with the planning department the results of that meeting. And because the Merrimack River is right out behind us, we're within a quarter mile of that, we also submitted to the Lower Merrimack Advisory Committee, River Advisory Committee. They had a meeting, reviewed it, and sent an email to us, which we forwarded to planning. Basically said they had no issues, and the fact that we were infiltrating all the storm water, they felt was a benefit, but basically had no concerns because it was such a small area. And we do have, we did make a request, because it's such a large site, 41 acres, and we're basically affecting about a half acre, that we did request right up front, waiver of full site plan review, even though we've have, I think, provided a lot of the information we typically look for. We've made that request. One of the things we didn't include was a landscape plan, because really, there's just, we're basically low men seating the disturbed areas, and it's a, it's a loading area, you know, well out of public view, so we just didn't think it was necessary. We have provided site lighting, so I think it's, it's pretty thoroughly engineered. That's kind of the long and short of it. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
One, one thing I wanted to mention, a couple of things. One would be moving on acceptance probably is about right at this time. Secondly, there, there were other, there were waiver requests beyond the waiver of full site plan, included outside consulting and landscape plan. We did actually get escrow. CLD has reviewed. We just got the comments on those today, which, nothing earth-shattering, a lot of housekeeping items that I think we can easily work out with Hayner Swanson to deal with those. I know, I'd be comfortable if you, if the board is to handle all of that, those, both of those waivers under the waiver of full site plan, if you feel comfortable to do that.
So, but if we've done peer review, we don't need to waive peer review?
If you're comfortable by, by waiving full site plan review, they would not have been required to ask for those two additional waivers, you could handle them as part of that waiver.
I get you. I understand. Thank you, Tim. Does the board have any questions with respect to the question of complete application, whether we accept it for review? If not, what's the will of the board? Lynn?
I will be accepted for review.
Is there a second for Lynn's motion?
Yes.
Desiree's got the second. She beat you to it. If there's no discussion on that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero for acceptance. And so the next issue is to consider whether waive full site plan review.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we waive full site plan review on the basis that strict conformity would pose unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Before I ask for a second, is the, is it the intent of your motion to subsume those two other waiver requests?
Indeed, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And is there a second for Alistair's motion? Desiree got a second again. She's faster than you, Nelson. Youth, man, youth.
It's the young.
Yeah.
Nelson, you and I just were.
There you go. Any discussion for the waiver of full site plan review? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero. Did you abstain?
No, I'm hanging.
Seven, zero, zero. Desiree. Desiree. Are there any members of the public or butters who wish to weigh in?
Yeah, they're very knowledgeable.
Seeing none. Does the board have any other questions for the applicant about the proposal in chief? Tom?
I, I heard you mention the word parking at the beginning of your discussion, and yet you didn't talk any further about it, but this is going to take away a lot of the parking that's right up there by the building. Is that right?
It takes away 22 parking spaces.
Okay. And the other parking spaces aren't disturbed by trucks coming in and out?
No, there's enough, basically, we're eliminating this, and you put turning templates on it, they can go right into this drive aisle. So, and frankly, the, the facility is really underutilized as far as parking.
Granted, I just wanted you to talk about it a little bit.
Yes, no, we did, we did look at that, and these, these, we've left these spaces. We did replace a couple of the handicap spaces that are being removed in here. We just replicated them right across. So, but yes, we, we've looked at that, and there is ample room for full-size tractor-trailers to get in and out of there.
Get out of there without disturbing.
Because the new pavement is 100 feet deep, and then you've got another 45 feet, basically, to the, to the next row of parking spaces, so it's an ample area for.
And one of the things that I, before any tenant were able to occupy, there would have to be an internal review by my department, building department, everybody else, to ensure we have sufficient parking. If we get to a point where it does not meet a parking requirement for any particular tenant, they would end up having to come to the board to ask for a waiver.
So, Tim, thank you for throwing in that extra information about parking. Nearly 400 parking spaces on this site seems like an extraordinarily large number for whatever's been back there for a while, and I guess when the Nashville Corp. was there that you were using it. But does the number come from its former use as the Nashville Corp., or is it based on square footage as a warehouse in our new?
I believe the original was based off of Nashville Corp., if I'm not mistaken.
I mean, what's built out there was based on Nashville Corp., but we reran the numbers on.
On current.
On the current. Basically, it's, it's mostly, there is a little bit of office space, 26, 28,000, 26,000 square feet. The rest of it is all warehouse, and the parking calculations that are on the plan, with the exception of the one typo, are based on, on the current intended use.
Okay. Makes sense.
If, if we're fully occupied. Some, you know, as I said, there's quite a bit of vacant space out there, but it assumes the, being occupied. And there actually is, one thing I did want to mention, that there is some additional existing parking area that, north of this field, kind of the north end of this field, that isn't currently striped. You could easily stripe in, I would say, another 30, 40 parking spaces, if the need ever arose. So there really is no, even though our numbers kind of say there's eight, I think, eight spaces or 12 spaces.
Was there not also a future parking area of approximately 160 or so that was?
Well, it's, I mean, it's potential future.
It's potential future.
It's a former parking lot, you know, it's an existing parking lot that hasn't been used in decades, probably. But it's still viable, you know, it could be re-striped and reused if the need ever arose. But even closer to the building, there, there is some pavement at the end of this parking lot that you could stripe more spaces.
Yeah, I didn't have any concern at all that you don't have enough. I was thinking that you had too many.
I would say for the actual use. It's based on the.
Depends on what they're going to use it for.
Parking regulation, but the, the reality is.
It's really going to depend on what tenant is going to look at the space.
Yeah. But I would say that it will continue to be underutilized as far as the actual parking of cars out there.
And it sounds like, for whatever you're going to use it for, or potentials, you've got plenty of parking.
Absolutely, yes, that's our feeling. That's, that's the only.
Yeah, I don't think that you're going to be short. Nelson, you look like you've got a question on the tip of your tongue.
Well, I just wanted to point out and make it clear as part of the record that there is no tenant right now for this space. And it's just an empty space, in that at the time a tenant comes in, it will go through further review by community development and maybe planning board, or maybe not, depending planning board, or maybe not, depending what it is. And I just wanted to put that on the record and make that part of the meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the things that Earl and I had chatted about when he first introduced the project to us is, this is an opportunity for the property owner to help in the assistance of marketing the property for future tenants. There's no intent to construct this until there's a tenant that needs this to take place. It's one of those things that it's having the approval in hand will help with the marketing and attraction.
Right. This space back here is currently vacant, and that's, that's why they want to be able to present this space as having these nine loading docks. And, but they won't build it until they've got a tenant on their agreement.
If it gets somebody into the space, that's good.
Yeah, and that's where they're, that's where they're coming from. It's basically to enhance the space so they can market it better to a warehouse firm.
Very good. Good luck with that. Any other questions, members of the board, with respect to the substance of the application? If not, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant the waiver of full site plan review.
Did that part already.
Oh, sorry. Correct. We grab final approval, subject to the conditions specified in Gillian's memo of March thirtieth, twenty seventeen, and otherwise, no word.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Nelson, you got that one.
Okay.
I saw you that time. We didn't have any conditions or adjustments to be tonight.
No, there aren't needed.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion to grant conditional final approval, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero. So you are all set.
Good luck marketing it. Appreciate it.
Good luck marketing it. I hope that you guys are successful.
Yep.
Hope you're successful.
With that, we are at item five, which is discussion of our master plan implementation. And that is Tim's show. And we're going to talk about conditional use permits and that sort of thing.
Mm.
Important stuff.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Don't have a tremendously long presentation here tonight. In your packet, you should have the section of the zoning ordinance from the I-1 district that currently allows mixed use in the I-1 district. That's our starting point. That's what our existing ordinance is, which is where I'm really going to start tonight, is just giving a really quick overview of where the existing ordinance is, what it allows, where those mixed use projects can happen today, and then where do we go moving forward with trying to implement those recommendations from the master plan. As of today, a mixed use is only allowed with a conditional use permit when you are in the I-1 district, have at least fifty acres, you're serviced by municipal sewer, you have water from either MVD or Penachuck, and five hundred feet of frontage on DW Highway in the state-controlled portions, that being south of Greeley Street and north of Bedford Road. So only in the state-controlled portions of DW, and in the I-1, and with the acreage and the water and sewer. Those are the only places right now we would be allowed to do mixed use, conditional use permit. What that allows for is I-1 uses, C-2 uses, elderly overlay uses, and residential uses with the PUD requirements being utilized for those residential uses. For submission requirements, again, a lot of this should be familiar, given the three that we've done. You've got the master site development plan, the buffers and the phasing requirements. The dimensional requirements are set up in the ordinance, but there's also the ability for the planning board to be flexible with those requirements and allow for relief to make a better project. And then there's the eleven required criteria to grant approval of the conditional use permit. Just again summarizing, it's the reasonableness of the location, having a positive fiscal impact, making sure it doesn't have a negative impact on municipal levels of service and traffic, infrastructure, buffers, continuity of open space and recreation, architectural design, light, noise, pollution, odor, et cetera. So where right now can you actually do one of these? Well, this one should be familiar. That's the Flatley property in the northern part of town. That is one of the places where you're perfectly allowed to do an I-1 mixed use project and meet all the requirements of zoning. The other three parcels where you could do it, we probably don't want to do it. Anheuser-Busch, Kohlsmann, Elbit Systems, and BAE. Those are the other three parcels in town that meet the requirements as set forth in the ordinance. You'll notice the Edgebrook is not on that list. Edgebrook by itself needed variances in order to proceed forward. They did not have the five hundred feet of frontage because they had multiple parcels, and if I recall, they were slightly short on the fifty acres as well.
Yeah, they were thirty-eight, something like that.
So Edgebrook, despite the fact they got a variance, would not, is not something that by ordinance would be allowed for mixed use. Also not included, obviously, is the parcel next to Merrimack Premium Outlets, because it's not on Daniel Webster, it's not in the I-1 along DW Highway, it's only twenty acres, so on and so forth. The zoning board basically has allowed those two to move forward. So where do we want to go? As I mentioned, two out of the three conditional use permits you've seen have required variances to proceed. The only other locations I've mentioned, and the master plan clearly advocates for allowing for more mixed use development in the community. There's, again, approximating at least four to six different recommendations within the master plan dealing with mixed use. So my initial thoughts and where I wanted to see the discussion start tonight is, A, do we expand this to other zoning districts in commercial industrial, the I-2, the I-3, although I-3 probably doesn't make sense because there's only one parcel zoned R-3, which is where Atria Medical is located, the commercial districts? Do we expand there? Do we want to look at expanding the residential districts? My initial thought would be no, but again, it's open-ended discussion at this point. Is that fifty acre minimum something that we want to carry forward? Is that something we want to look at, examine? Obviously, do we want to eliminate the requirement to have frontage on DW Highway? If we're looking at additional zones, it probably makes sense to look at other areas. And another important thing, I think, is we need to look at the different circumstances of these projects. If we're talking about a greenfield development where there's nothing on the parcel, you might want to look at it differently than if you're looking at a redevelopment of an existing developed area. So those are the types of things, I think, I wanted to put out for the board, at least at this thirty thousand foot level, to try to get some guidance before we start looking at where and how we move forward with the ordinance changes. So that is it. Like I said, I wanted to keep it short and sweet, but the existing ordinance, I think, has its good points, but as we've seen throughout the review we've done on the projects that have come before you before, it does have some things that probably deserve to be tweaked. And I think the master plan provides us that opportunity to look critically and carefully at other parts of town that I think would be advantageous for expanding this type of use.
Thank you, Tim. Does anybody have any questions right off the bat for Tim? Lynn?
You're in contact with, or at least trying to be in contact with, potential people moving into town. And in your, in your research, have you found areas that we could improve that would, or we could change that would improve the ability to bring in new people?
Not specifically to Merrimack. I have not had specific conversations with anyone in particular looking to move to Merrimack or anything in particular, but from a regional perspective, from a statewide perspective, one of the key issues that New Hampshire and Southern New Hampshire in particular, and Merrimack obviously being in Southern New Hampshire, faces is retaining our younger workers and attracting the right type of workforce to help us get the economic development that we want to see happen in town. The biggest thing that we are seeing is, New Hampshire is one of the aging states in the country now. We actually have a higher average age than the state of Florida right now. As hard as that is for me to conceptualize and believe, we actually do have an older population than Florida does. We are seeing, I don't have specific numbers, but your typical college graduate, a New Hampshire high school student, is more likely to leave New Hampshire to go to college than other states, and is more likely to settle and find a job outside of New Hampshire than in other states. So New Hampshire has a big issue with attracting and keeping the younger workers and attracting the type of workforce that a lot of companies are looking for. What I foresee this type of mixed use project and we see development as helping us do is provide diversity in our housing stock and options that aren't typically available in suburban Southern New Hampshire. Millennials, as a stereotype, are not looking for two acres of cul-de-sac road to live on and move on, and they're looking for diverse areas where they can live, work, and play within a relatively compact area so that they have the best of both worlds not far from where they live. They're starting families later, and they're having fewer kids. So apartments, townhouses, rentals, all need to be factoring into decisions, I think, not only Merrimack, but Southern New Hampshire in general needs to be looking at in the future.
Follow on to that. Workforce housing does not necessarily translate into low-income...
Absolutely not.
...poorer employer...
It's not subsidized. It's on Section Eight.
We're talking about the prime people that we're trying to attract to town and keep in town.
If you look at the statutory requirement under RSA six seventy-four fifty-eight through whatever it is, the workforce housing statutes, for a home for sale, you're targeting what somebody making one hundred percent of the area median income for a family of four could afford for a home. In this region of the state, you're probably talking anywhere from two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars or so. That would be considered a workforce housing unit, based on the income levels that this area has. For rentals, you're talking about sixty percent of the area median income for a family of three, which roughly equates to somewhere between twelve and fourteen hundred dollars a month for rent. So those are, that's workforce. That is what workforce is in reality. It's not the public housing projects.
We're not talking low income. We're talking about...
It's not low income. Workforce housing has a bad name, for whatever reason, but it's...
And that's my, that's my point in bringing it up.
For frankly, it's housing for people who are in my position, making what I make for a family of four. I am your target demographic for workforce housing.
And we want to keep you here.
He's not here now.
[laughing]
Mike?
I would build upon that and talk about just what is that kind of workforce? What is that business? And kind of look at, you know, how, we used to build the houses and the infrastructure to support the mills, but now we're getting more into these kind of high-tech industry needs, and tying back into the things that you've all said about having the flexibility of services and living and that sort of thing. So I would almost even say, if we could think about the planning for that, in the where and the how, you know, what those locations, what those items of relief that we talked about, I could see, if we could think about it in the sense of targeting the employer, the type of employer and the type of employee, we may be, maybe be able to quickly find some answers to Tim's questions.
Thank you, Mike. Nelson?
I had a couple of other thoughts on this. I'd been, I've had conversations from time to time with people in the business of developing and trying to bring projects to Merrimack. And one of the things that has been pointed out to me, and I can't support it too well, but is the, the, some builders, some people feel that Merrimack is unique in having industrial land that is accessible with water, sewer, and railroad. It's kind of a unique combination and should be very attractive. By the way, it's been there for fifty years, and it isn't all gone yet. But it's something to keep in mind. We've been advised, let's say, these people advised me, keep the residential, keep the industrial, because it's going to, it's unique in New Hampshire for what you have, having those facilities available. So that's something to just keep in mind. The other thing is, it came up with the, with the development on the south end, right on the Nashua line, was the potential conflict between industrial and residential. And it came out right there. There were industrial people who were very concerned about it. So that's something I think we want to keep in mind. I would think that, based on the experience we've had, we've had a lot, we have a lot more commercial space available than is wanted. I think that when you look at these mixed uses, everybody wants to build a housing because that, that'll sell, but you know it as well as I. There's a lot of, a lot of commercial space that's not occupied, and it's available, and it's just not, we maybe got too much commercial...
One of the things that I think is worth considering, and I think the board should take a hard look at, and you probably, you may have actually heard this, this idea before with the Executive Park Drive area, is understanding and giving some credence to the fact that if you have existing commercial built out in an area, that that could help and take the place of and be counted as part of the consideration for the mixed use of the general area. Rather than requiring it to all be on the same parcel, is taking the area into consideration and allowing for...
That's a good point, a good way around this.
And Executive Park Drive makes complete sense, because there's one way in, one way out. It's enclosed, it's a natural area that, those parcels that line that road, existing commercial, existing, you know, hotel is going up, you're going to be seeing the proposal coming in for the former hotel owners for residential in that area, and I think part of the argument they're likely to make is, this is now becoming a mixed use area because of the existing commercial development that's out here.
Yeah.
Good point. Nelson? Anyone else with comments?
So, I'll for my own. I agree with Nelson's comment about the industrial land being sort of a resource that's in limited supply. And if you look at National Regional Planning Commission's maps, the industrial, the available industrial land in the national region is almost all in Merrimack. But that said, it also has been here for a long time, and there's not a lot of people, you know, beaten down the door to come get at it to open up new industrial uses. We do have to kind of make sure we think about conflicts between them and all of that. Maybe some of the more modern industrial uses aren't what we think about industrial-wise in terms of smells and noise and traffic and those sorts of things. The existing ordinance looked at taking big parcels, fifty plus, and putting a few different things in different areas of the parcel. And I think that the new workforce type of mixed use and the walkable community type of mixed use is compact development, where it's commercial on the first floor and residential up above, or, you know, some kinds of things like that, where you don't really get to build one without the other. There are two things in the same building.
I think the terminology I've used in the past was vertical integration rather than horizontal.
Yeah, that makes sense. I hadn't used that phrase before, but vertical integration. I would like to see conditional use as a vehicle for folks to do some of those kinds of mixed uses along DW Highway in the commercial zone, or I guess probably the other commercial zone, commercially zoned areas as well. But not necessarily on huge parcels, but on compact, walkable, new workforce, live, work, and play in the same area kind of developments. And so that bring, in my view, that would bring down the lot size requirement, maybe where you don't even have a lot size requirement.
Way down.
Maybe you don't even have a lot size requirement. You think about, you know, de-emphasizing the automobile and parking spaces and driveway access and those sorts of things. Not that those things go away, but the focus is more on, you know, keeping things nearby so that if you did live there and wanted to walk, it's not five miles to the grocery store, it's six hundred yards or something like that, because you've allowed them to do that. It's got to be on water and sewer, it's got to be engineered right so that the groundwater doesn't, you know, run off, the rainwater doesn't run off and collect up pollutants and that sort of thing. So there's some engineering challenges for it, but I'm fully supportive of getting the lot size down, opening it up to the commercial zone. Maybe, you know, it's been industrial ever since it's been around, and since there's only really one vacant parcel that that could be in, I don't know if we don't start saying, hey, this really ought to be not an industrial tool, but a commercial zone tool.
My first recommendation is that we eliminate it from the I-1 district, and we make it its own standalone, either overlay district or general town requirements that allow for it in multiple districts. It just doesn't belong stuck in I-1.
I think that you're right about that. So if we, if this is an overlay over the commercial district at DW Highway, and somebody came forward to do a straight-up commercial proposal, they could do that under the ordinary...
Correct.
...planning and zoning regs, and they wouldn't have to do conditional use. If they wanted variances for something, they could chase that around.
Sure.
But then they could also look at it and say, hey, I want to add residential and commercial together, because those would be the only two combinations if you're not in the industrial zone, and do mixed use, and I want to do it on this parcel, I want to do it by a CUP. And we would do a development agreement for that, figure out what makes sense. You'd get into architectural standards and appearance and walkability and public accommodations and all those kinds of things.
And we obviously have got to get rid of the requirement that it's on a state portion of the road, too. I mean, that's, that's a killer. That should go quick as, quick as anything.
Yeah, it's almost duplicative of saying industrial, because that's where all the industrial land is, so.
Exactly.
Yep.
But yeah, I see this stuff as, as a tool for the redevelopment of some of the parcels closer into town.
Especially in the Village Dodes, Reed's Ferry area, Thornton's Ferry, there's opportunities there, I think, to try to re-establish and reconnect to those.
I mean, Star Drive, Star Drive is another area that should, could well do with a facelift. It would be, we could do quite a lot with that area.
Now, before we totally eliminate it from the I-1, much of the area along DW Highway towards the river, behind all this residential, is still I-1.
Yep.
Wouldn't we want to have it in there? I mean, if somebody came up with some development on those parcels?
Yeah. Desiree?
Are you saying eliminate, or are you just saying remove that description from it so that you can then consider it?
I'm not saying that we eliminate it from being allowed in I-1. What I'm saying is we eliminate this section being solely I-1, so that it would be available to...
It could be in Merrimack.
We, it would, then it would, it would be an exercise that we'd have to take, and take a look at the overall zoning map and say, okay, what areas do we think make sense to put this overlay district, whether it be commercial, industrial, resident? Again, that's the conversation, I think, that's a step, step or two away from where we are right now, but...
Yeah. I like the idea of using an overlay district that we can draw on a map rather than saying it's allowed in the C and the I and part of the R, because then we could at least get a visual as to what we're talking about. But I think in the southern industrial section where Nanocomp is and these guys, those guys probably deserve to be left alone to do their industrial business. probably deserve to be left alone to do their industrial business, more than, you know, the area off Railroad Ave or any of those kinds of places that turn industrial when you get to the backside of synergy storage. So, what else?
I think you've given me enough to go on to at least have some outlining at least put together for you for the next meeting, whether I'm here or one of the other staff members is here.
So we dealt with location, we dealt with size, lot size, we dealt with frontage on DW Highway. I'm not married to that. I think it makes sense on...
I think, I think the conversation of redevelopment versus greenfield development is something we, I think we put in the back pocket that we want to treat those differently. I just don't know that we're ready at this stage to say how we treat those differently.
Okay. That makes sense.
Keep them, keep them open-minded.
Absolutely.
Once you, once we kind of get past those questions about, you know, the wheres and the lot sizes and all of that, I want to make sure that we're really building into the ordinance all of the kind of compact walkability-related resources kinds of things. When we talk about using development in the area to be kind of the counterbalance for a mixed use, I don't know if this makes complete sense to do, but if you use that WalkScore tool, it's based on there being some facilities around there, and you might say that you can do a residential component of a CUP in an area where the WalkScore is above X.
Good idea.
I like that.
I would certainly encourage, if any of you have thoughts that you want to put together for the first meeting of May, I still can't believe I'm saying that, please do so, or if you want to get it, me or any of the staff in advance, we'll, we'll try to make sure we include it in the packets.
Good start, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. You picked the right area for us to focus on to start this off, big broad strokes. Any other questions for Tim before we let him off the hot seat? Not that that seat's...
He's gone.
The same seat over there. All right. With that, we'll, we'll close out that agenda item, and next item on our agenda is the discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anyone have any? That makes that an easy agenda item.
That's an easy.
The only thing, and I don't know if you'd forgotten, was that Nelson was perhaps going to chat a little bit about, I thought you were going to talk a little bit sidewalk stuff for this meeting, or is that on hold at this point?
Oh, I didn't...
We'll put that on, we'll put that on hold.
That goes to the next meeting.
I'll be glad to.
We'll defer that to the next meeting.
Actually, what might make sense, if you want to devote your May discussion to sidewalks, perhaps that gives me and the staff a little bit of time to look at June for the next discussion on mixed use.
Okay. That makes sense. So May will be sidewalks and June will be Tim's next, next installment on this plan. The only other thing that I would mention for discussion, possible, not possible action, but discussion, Tim has once again got some staff turnover that he's managing, so he's going to interview some new folks to have a new secretary.
Yes, Amy Casperius, our part-time secretary, has found full-time employment, so she has, she's left. And the application period's already closed, I have 18 applicants, well, the narrowing those down to who knows how many by Friday, and hopefully be interviewing shortly, but I was able to get the HR process started soon enough, so that I actually had the deadline for applications before Amy had even left. So, her last day was Friday, she's now working at Bratton, Whitney, and Londonderry, so she, but one of the challenges of a part-time position is, obviously, somebody finds a full-time job, it's hard, it's hard to keep them. There's usually two types of people that I get for these type positions. You get people like Sue Holstein, who was my previous person in the position, who's towards the end of her career, wants a slower-paced, part-time job until they retire, and then you have the other end of the spectrum, which is people who are looking for full-time work but taking part-time. So if I can get anybody from a position like this for a couple of years, I'm doing pretty good, so.
The other thing that I wanted to mention is, it's an accolade for Tim, our Rotary Club recognizes excellence in the workplace, and I nominated Tim again for some recognition for that. So it's the second time I've done that to him.
But, but you keep being excellent, so it deserves recognition.
I think that it does deserve recognition. You're getting a little flush in the face there. So the thing for me, you know, and this kind of all kind of crystallized for me in a conversation I was having with somebody who was interested in building something in Merrimack, and they're saying, you know, would I be able to do this, would I be able to do that? I'm like, you know what, you can contact the community development department, and they're trying to help you get your thing done. They're not going to try and burn you if you say the wrong thing, or you use the wrong language, or something like that. You can count on, you know, contacting Tim, and it's not a trap, and it's not tricks, and it's not like, you know, when you contact the zoning department in Nashua or Manchester, I don't want to badmash them, I don't know what they're like, but where you're, you know, you have to be cautious and guard your words and things like that. You could really kind of lay out your project and say, I got five options, and that really makes a difference for the town, to have somebody that, that is looking out for solutions, not for barriers and obstacles. And that's one of the reasons why I put his name down there again.
And I'll, I'll build on that a little bit, because I've been on a couple of state commissions and study committees that have been talking about this, and there are a number of people at the state level who have said, you know, Merrimack used to be an issue. It isn't an issue anymore. You want to know how to do this? Go to Merrimack, see what they're doing and how they're doing it, and pattern what you do after that. So, Tim, that's, that's kudos to you.
Anybody else want to compliment Tim before?
It's too much already.
You matched your shirt.
He's matching his shirt, yeah.
There we go. Okay. The approval of the minutes of March 7, 2017 is the next agenda item.
Will we approve this printed?
Oh, my God.
So motion to approve is printed. Is there a second?
No, I've got issues. I'll second it for discussion.
Second it for discussion, and I'll offer your corrections, please.
Okay, corrections. Page one, line nine, called to order, and two, planning zoning administrators report. Those two paragraphs look like they should have been combined in some way different than what they are. They're, they're pieces taken from...
Yeah, that...
Let the track changes get a little walking around.
The what, the track?
Track changes.
Track changes.
When they're, that's, you know, when they're...
It's a software thing.
I still took those suggestions.
Well, I'd like to do that. Then the other thing I have a question on was on last page, item five. Chairman Best read a notice from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, FEMA stating that it would collect data on the Merrimack watershed this spring prior to remapping certain rivers and identifying flood risks. No Merrimack rivers are included in the study. Tim Thompson will scan and email the notice to interested board members. First of all, I didn't get a notice of that, I didn't remember it coming up even, and I'm not sure...
Nobody asked me for it, that's why. I still have it. If you, if you're requesting one, I can send it to you.
I would request one...
You got it.
And try and understand what is really going on here. Maybe you can, in a few words, tell us, this is a...
Right now, I could not, because it's been a month since I've looked at it.
Oh, okay.
I can give you a sense of what the thing was, at least from my memory, which won't be completely accurate, but it'll be the best I can do. It was a rather lengthy letter with a lot of detail indicating that the Army Corps of Engineers and the folks that make FEMA maps were going to do some new updated studies in the area to be able to update those maps, and it was kind of a notice to say, here's a couple of websites where you can follow what we're doing, if you see us around the area, that's what we're doing, you know, don't get tipped over if there's a truck full of workers looking, looking around the property, that sort of thing. So it was really kind of a heads-up, this is what's going on. Curiously, it did list the rivers, and it doesn't have any of ours, and I don't know why that gives us those...
Merrimack, Sohiga, no...
Those aren't the ones that were on the list.
They're not updated.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
They're not updating them, or at least they're not working on that project.
It was, it was a form letter generically to region, to the region in general.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it was a little unusual, because it looked like it was noticed to affected parties, and we were not a particularly affected party.
Yeah.
But nonetheless.
Okay. Maybe...
Still want it?
Yeah, if it's less than three pages.
It's got a couple of sites on some websites and things that you can go and follow along and see what their map changes are.
I'll make a PDF out of it and email it to you.
Thank you. Line 15 of the same set of minutes, Nelson Disco informed the board that the state did test borings in the Babusick Brook Bridge, rather than, informed that the board, that the state.
Got it.
Okay? That's all I got.
Any other comments or questions on the minutes of May, of March 7? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700 to approve the minutes. And that brings us to item eight, which is to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I reserve my right to make that motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second for Alister's motion?
Who gave?
Desiree, second it, yes. No discussion of the motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700.
Who gave him the...